I'd like to call the August 19th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. One nation, in the great Constitution.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Excused, yeah. Matt, can you review the five exits, please?
Yes, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. So first up is open to the public and I think, did some people sign up? Would you do me a favor in time? Thank you. And I, there's a couple of new faces, so I just want to let you know that you have a four-minute time limit to speak. Kathryn Bucemi.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Kathryn Bucemi and I'm part of a working group called Beacon Parents for Phone-Free Schools. Implementing a classroom-only phone restriction and stricter consequences are a step in the right direction, but we need a plan for getting to a full-day phone restriction sooner rather than later. Why is the full-day restriction the best route? There are three key reasons, as mentioned in the deck that we shared previously. Firstly, the biggest problems are happening outside the classroom, at lunch, at recess, in bathrooms and hallways where filming without consent and bullying are most rampant. Secondly, it removes the burden of policing from teachers, who I think we can all agree already have enough to do. Finally, it frees students to reconnect mentally and socially, eyes up, interacting with real life around them. Without the distraction of counting down the minutes until they can get their phones out again, they can focus on classwork and engage in actual live conversations with their peers. It's not a taking away, it's about giving back the freedom from FOMO. The fear of missing out on something happening in social media often causes people to miss out on what is actually happening in real life. Social media is a collective trap that we all fall into, where even the bad or competitive feelings it can generate are outweighed by our fears of missing something. We have all done this. But this can especially be detrimental for children who are expected to socialize and learn. The only way to combat this collective trap is with a collective action. If our communities and schools can band together to free students from the stress and anxiety of social media, even for just six hours a day, that is a win. Many parents worry about how they will communicate with their kids if smartphones are not allowed, but there are numerous solutions for that, with allow-listed parent emails, classroom phones, and main office phones. There is clear precedent to show that going phone-free is beneficial to students. I'd like to highlight the evidence right across the river in Newburgh, where both students and teachers have experienced the benefits of phone-free life. At Newburgh Free Academy, where school has a full-day restriction and yonder pouches in place, one student said, quote, "Throughout my middle-school experience, there were a lot of people talking about you, whether it be on Snapchat or posting a story that made fun of the way you looked. It made me feel depressed." Even so, when the ban was announced, her reaction was, "I'm a teenager, so I can't say I'm a fan of them taking away my phone." But by the end of the school year, she couldn't help noticing her improved focus during class, and during free periods once spent focused on technology, she now chatted with other students. Looking back, she said her phone and social media use was entirely to blame for her mental health struggles. She has experienced improvements in her mental health because of Newburgh's phone restrictions. Quote, "I'm more confident in who I am, and I think that just comes from not being able to worry about what other people are saying about me." According to the principal, pulling the Band-Aid off was difficult, but pushback has been minimal and classroom distractions have plummeted. Teachers and other staff have noted it has made such a difference in the classroom. Students are paying attention, they have their hands up, they are more engaged. In conclusion, phone-free schools will help reverse the major harm caused by smartphones and social media, and we advocate strongly for implementing a full-day restriction. Thank you so much for listening. Really, really appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your service here for the Beacon City School District. I'm Jessica Ericksmoan. I'm really looking forward to hearing about what the, what the update is, but I just wanted to reiterate what Kathryn just so brilliantly said, that the, the idea of being in a school is to learn. We're putting them in a situation where we want them to succeed. To take away the distractions, to give our teachers the ability to, to say what happens in their room, so that they're, they're not distracted, so that they're making good grades. There are actual statistics of teachers that I've spoken with, I don't have those with me, I'm sorry, but, but students have been passing their classes rather than failing. We need to, to look at what, how we can set them up to succeed and how teachers can get their jobs done, because they're challenged as it is. I want to support them and the students in being smarter in our community. Our Congress has even come up with a bipartisan bill to support our kids in this, in this arena, and I feel like we need to follow suit. And I do think that maybe it does need to change according to age and, and the grade that the person might be in, but especially for middle schools. I watched the, the movie, The Social Dilemma, where they had statistics that were so scary about how teenage girls' suicide, suicidal ideation, cutting, self-harm, went skyrocketed when social media exploded, and I guess '08 is when they had this CDC statistic. So we need to really look at what we're asking of our children. We're not asking them to see, well, oh yeah, am I getting enough likes? Am I getting a, a friend who's sending me a text in the middle of school who thinks my ears are big or something with my hair like this? That's what our kids are learning, not English and math, and I think that's been reflected in some of our grades that we've, we've seen, unfortunately. But I, I want, I want to thank you for, for having the conversation and the forum open to us, and I hope that we're able to, to move forward with some good progress for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't sign up. My name is Jessica Jeliff. I was here last week, and I am nervous. I am a member of the working group called Beacon Parents for Phone-Free Schools, and while we do believe a full-day restriction for all would be best, I would like to offer a different alternative. I came to last week's meeting and I feel like I was privy to the really incredible way that you all work together and listen to each other and were able to be flexible with your ideas and came up with, you were talking about the, the smartwatches, and were able to come up with a whole new idea about whether they should be banned or not, bringing them into the high school, not the middle school, because of how you understand that kids are different at different ages. I was really impressed by that flexibility, and with that in mind, I was wondering if you guys had thought about a, a middle-ground alternative to banning or not banning phones through all levels of K through 12 education. I wondered if you had considered a sixth-grade ban only or a middle-school ban only, kind of along the lines of those smartwatches. But it seems to me that the sixth grade, which is notoriously the hardest grade for kids to transition into, might be really helped by not having these phones involved in the mix. When they are, at a time when they're combined with much larger population of students in their class, they're dealing with navigating the halls of this new location, but also figuring out what it means to move from class to class without their home base, without their homeroom, not knowing who they can turn to if they do have issues, like they did just have in fifth grade, and add puberty into that mix, and it's kind of, it's a crazy time. Anywho, I wondered if you guys had thought about that option as a possible stepping stone for the school district, especially if the governor comes up with their legislation of their own. Maybe this could be a way to ease kids into the, into, into it. My kid just went through sixth grade, and though he did not have a phone of his own, he told me so many stories about how they come into play and how difficult they can make other kids' lives. My kid did not have direct, you know, issues with bullying in schools, but was witness, is witness to that, and the phones are a part of it, they just are. It seems like we could really help these kids that are having a really difficult time. So, thank you for listening, and thank you for listening to this alternate possibility. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello. I'm Katie Helmath. I have a child in each system, elementary school, middle school, and first will be Beacon High School. All of my children have phones. I'm catching up, so I'm, I'm new to this issue and hearing what all of you have to say. I just wanted to speak on behalf of not banning the phones. Each of my children has a phone, and I need to know where they are, after school, before school, going to sports after school. So I also believe that the issues that we're speaking of with social media and the issues with the phones is very real and very important. I believe that that happens all, all during the day, so it doesn't just happen in school, and we as parents need to be very mindful of how our kids are using the phones, and that is on us as part of our job when we enforce devices down at our own homes. Devices down in class is very hard for the teachers to do. I don't want them to have to do more enforcement of devices down. I know how hard it is for me as a parent to do in my house, and so I know it's really hard to do in a classroom with a bunch of kids. But I just, I feel as a collective that parents need to train their kids and get feedback of how the phones are being used in the class, or shouldn't be used in the class, they shouldn't be used in front of the teachers during teaching time, et cetera. So the policy of removing the phone, getting it taken away, is good. That happened to my child, so I had to go physically, go sign the phone back out and learn that my child was using the phone too much in school, and this is an issue, and I need to talk to that, to my child about that. So right before I came, I had some young people around me, and I asked them, tell me, what, you know, what are your thoughts? One person says, "Music helps me focus when I'm in class with my earbuds on, so I like that." That brings attention to how other, just people learn, and I know we shouldn't, we're, it's not normal, I guess, or traditional to say, yeah, go ahead and listen to your music in the middle of class, or when this child is listening to music at school, but I think it just draws attention to how different kids learn and express when they're in school. Another child said, "It lets the student, if they have a problem right now and they want to privately talk to their parents about it, they don't need to cause a scene and leave the room and do this." And I asked that child, "Okay, well, what happens, when are you talking to your parents?" Which also brings it on us as parents, when are we talking to them? It's at 1:45 and they're responding. So that's on us also to not keep talking. But that child said, "Well, it's on us, we know we're not going to learn as much if we're not listening to the teacher." So that is a problem. But I was, so, I'm just in favor of not banning. I'm looking forward to reviewing all of these videos to hear what you're all saying and learning more about what you've proposed. I'm sorry I'm late to catching up. I know it's a big issue, you know, all over the country, so thank you for giving it the consideration and everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other faces that would maybe want to make public comment in the audience, so I'm going to move on. Matt, I don't know if you want to make a comment now or just go into the workshop?
I'll talk when I do the workshop.
Okay. So we have a couple of, we have three, we have a public hearing and then the policy workshop, and then the tax warrant workshop. So the, the first is this public hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing for the district-wide emergency response plan?
Some moves.
Anthony? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lena. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? I'm also in favor of passes eight to zero. Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, so we're, we're required, obviously, to have a district emergency response plan and also building emergency response plans. Part of the requirement by the state is that the public can review it on our website for 30 days and that there's a public hearing at the beginning of a board meeting. So the building emergency response plans are not open to the public for maybe obvious reasons. We don't want to advertise exactly how we respond to things in each school, but the district emergency response plan is, is a little bit more of kind of like a higher-altitude lens, so to speak, like it doesn't get into granular detail, but it talks in sort of broader strokes how we respond to things. Just to let everyone know, from the state level, there are a couple changes this year. I've, I've seen it covered a little bit in the news, and I, they won't be a big deal for Beacon, but, but one of them, this is, was probably the thing that has been covered a little bit, is that the state essentially banned or outlawed having like real-life, like lockdown simulations with props or, you know, like, like simulating, you sometimes see this go viral from other states, like, you know, like there's some sort of drill in a school with kids in the building, and it's very realistic. So that's been banned in New York State. That's not really an issue at all for us here in Beacon, because we've never done that. I, I do want to note, though, that BPD does have access to our buildings in the summertime when kids aren't around to do drills. That was much more difficult this year because of all the construction, but typically every summer, they do drills when kids aren't present. And then the other thing is there's now notification requirement around when we do a drill. It's a little bit vague, but it's, it's like you get notified like a week in advance. We're not telling people exactly when the drill's going to happen, but it's, but essentially we're saying there'll be a emergency response drill or a lockdown drill, you know, this upcoming week. I think the attempt of that is to allay anxiety. I'm not completely sure it does, but like, I, I know that's the intent, so we will obviously follow that, too. So that's basically the changes on our end. Otherwise, we have a, a chief security officer here in the district, Mark Thomas, and we have security personnel at all of our buildings. Our principals take this very seriously. They each have teams in their buildings, emergency response teams that are comprised of teachers and school psychologists, social worker, and other staff members. So it's something we spend a lot of time with. And we still also, last thing I'll say, is we still do have a consulting contract, as do a lot of districts with Alteris, through Dutch Disposes, but they help us with the planning and making sure we're compliant. So now would be the public hearing part, like if anybody wanted to speak to the district safety plan?
Board members or from the public?
Sounds good. Hi, Katie Helmath again. I think this is on topic, but if we're having those emergencies and my children have phones during those emergencies, I feel much better knowing that they have phones and I can say, "Where are you?" So when we, one of the school drills ago, there was a live one, and I was able to text right into my middle schoolers to say, "Where are you? What room are you in?" I don't know if you want us doing that, but I wanted to do that, and I wanted to just know where they were, so. Yes.
These are the worst conversations. I despise them and they give me dry mouth, but, speaking to that exact concern, I have a counter-concern that during an emergency is when you at least want your child to be face-down in a phone texting someone instead of looking up, eyes open, ears open, listening to instructions from an authority figure who has, you know, information. We need to centralize that, those instructions from a person in control of the classroom, whatever space they're in. And I feel that, you know, the children need, kids across the board need to be, again, eyes up, ears open, what do I do now staying safe? I feel like that's so much more important. I don't want to text from my kid about what room they're in. I want them to find out what the safest possible thing is to do and do that thing. I don't want to text. I don't want to hear from them. I want them to be safe, and that I feel very passionately about, obviously, as everyone does. So that's my quick counterpoint to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second. Who is that?
Semra.
Semra.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? I'm also in favor of passes eight to zero. So we're going to move on to our cell phone update.
Is the microphone positioned in a way that the staff needs to talk now? They need to come up? All right, good evening, everyone. So we, the, the policy committee of the board has been having a lot of conversations. Jessica, I think the meeting you're referring to is the policy meeting that you were at a week ago, so we've been talking about phones and personal electronic devices for many months. So tonight, we're going to more formally update, we're going to more formally update the, the board on this. Just a brief, brief preamble, the code of conduct and how we approach, whatever you want to call it, like student discipline, the behavior in our buildings, having a positive school climate, like it's something we spend a lot of time on. It's something that during my time here in Beacon, we spent a lot of time majorly revising or making tweaks to, all with the goal of making our schools a better, more inclusive place for all of our students. So when I first came here seven years ago, I, it was backed up with data, but there was a lot of discipline incidents which started with just a negative interaction between students and staff. That's something over the first two years I was here, we worked basically to, I don't want to say eliminate, but to drastically reduce. Now, we, we really look at if we have to do a long-term suspension, it's really for, especially at the middle and high school, an act of violence or selling drugs or something like that. Like, we tend to try to really work on solutions, restorative practices, working things out. We're certainly not perfect at it, but it's probably been one of the biggest changes that's happened under my time here at Beacon. I'm really thankful to have an administrative team. Cory Dwyer and Brian Soltis are here to, to probably more answer questions from you all about the cell phone policy, but our elementary principals are included in that group. We really try to approach each situation in a way of like, how do we get the best possible solution here for all parties involved? The reason I share that preamble is, five years ago, we did a, just a major renovation, renovation, that's, that's what we're doing in all the buildings, a major revision to our code of conduct. It was very involved. Eric Wright, an assistant superintendent at the time, it was like a month-long work in which we really rewrote many parts of it. It also was quite a process for the board at the time to go through that. So ever since then, we've been making more sort of minor revisions. So what I'm going to talk about tonight, in, in a sense of a large 50-page document, is a minor revision in a sense of our practices in our schools, and what we're asking from students and teachers is a bigger change. So what we're, the background for the cell phone, for the cell phone policy change comes from a few different things. Really, the, the biggest one for us, I, they're all really big, I'm not really ranking, but is hearing from our teachers. So over the past couple of years, we've had around 20 teachers experimenting with having kids put cell phones away for the entire class, and they've done it really successfully without a lot of issues, and, and a lot of their colleagues have sort of watched this happen over the years and, and wanted to also experiment it with it, too. We also, obviously, there's a ton of research about cell phones and the negative impact they may have in the moment in a classroom or at home, on attention, which would impact learning and also mental wellness. And like I mentioned, teachers, clear feedback from our teachers and parents wanting more clarity on a policy. So what we're proposing with this and what we've worked through the policy committee with the board is, before I get to it, and obviously it's right up there for everybody to read, so you don't have to listen to me, you can just read it, is that this is really grounded in talking to our teachers, because they're on the front lines of this. Brian and Cory, both at their buildings, have spent a lot of time with groups of teachers, teacher leadership, gathering input really over the last several months about, about what they want to see in terms of this. Certainly, there's, we have, I think we're talking about, about 130 teachers between the two schools, so there's a, they're, like, with anything, there's a wide range of opinions, but essentially, like, the, the bulk of feedback we've gotten from those teachers is they really want to start with a cell phone-free classroom restriction policy. So that would be in each class, putting the phones away in a designated space, then students would be able to get the phone at the end of class and move on to the next class. So I have a couple pictures there. I know they're not the best pictures in the world, but one is just like a, I think it's called like a shoe rack, and you just place your phones in that. We're going to be, you know, if we move forward with this, we would be starting the year with that. The second picture is something that is a, is a little bit more secure, and those, obviously there's schools around the country that are wrestling with the same stuff, and we started that order about a month ago, and they're still in back order. So those probably be arriving about a month or two into the school year. So just to be specific, at elementary schools, like always, and I know there's people who will say, well, you know, they've seen a kid at recess at elementary with a phone or something, but at elementary, there shouldn't be a change in that electronic devices should be stored away all day in student backpacks. At the middle school, we would ask students to put phones in designated spaces in each classroom, and not, so the phone would go in the designated space. We'd also ask for kids to put their smartwatches and/or earbuds away just on themselves, like in their backpack or pocket. At the high school, similar, except for one change, high school students would put cell phones away in designated spaces in each classroom, put earbuds away. At the high school, students would be allowed to still wear their smartwatch. The reasoning behind that is, at that age, smartwatches tend to not really be an issue of, of really much concern at the high school level. And so we wanted to, I wanted to work with the staff of the schools and try to make it appropriate, so that's one change. With this, there's, there is a line in the policy, kind of referencing accommodations. We do know we have a handful of students who have smartwatches on for medical reasons, so we'd work with those families who go through the 504 process, it may already be in there, but we'd work to make sure that that is in there in terms of students being able to stay in touch through the smartwatch with their family. So, so that would be the case with that. So it's not, just to speak to all the public comment, it is not a school-wide ban from phones, it's a classroom restriction of phones. I'll go a little bit into some of the steps we're going to take, but we have spent a lot of time thinking about this, talking with our teachers, receiving feedback from the public. I think that's just really the start of this part of it, but we feel like this is the step we need to take right now. We're taking about, between, round about in the high school, about 1,400 students, and I, we think this is a change that we'd like to focus on at the start of the year. And we feel like it's very doable. It also sets us up to evaluate how well we're doing and also discuss with our staffs, with the public, and with the board if we need to make changes as well. So I, I should have said this at the very beginning. So I, I should have said this at the very beginning. Brian and Corey are here tonight, so you don't have to wait till the end. You can just ask questions as we go. I'll try to answer the ones that make sense for me, and they certainly will jump in and answer questions that make sense, yeah.
What was the, like, on the first page, when you talk, in the background, that you have around 20 teachers experimenting with a classroom cellphone restriction, and that's been over the past two years with success? What was the origin of that experiment? Was it organic, or was it something that, was something principals saw and requested? Like, where did that idea come from? And, and how have you been monitoring it, and to what end? Was it with a goal of eventually addressing this issue, or was this just classroom management?
So at the high school, we had talked with our teachers, we had gotten feedback, you know, at the end of, I guess, the 22, 23 school year, and teachers had said, you know, we'd like to think about what we can do about phones. And so we opened up the year last year by saying, we want to try to reduce the amount of phone usage in class. And so I gave teachers basically the option of a shoe rack, the pencil case, or having to keep their phones in their backpacks. And so the teachers who chose to go with the shoe rack and who kind of stayed on top of it all year, you know, with specific examples, saw more success with it. It wasn't necessarily like a huge school-wide push, and so we didn't do a lot around enforcement or consistency, but the teachers that chose to keep up with it all year saw success with it.
And in that 2022, 2023 year, where you were getting that feedback, what was the feedback that you were getting that made them think that they wanted to take this action? Like, and what were the maybe differences that they noticed?
I think similar to what we've heard, like, students are distracted by it in class. And so, you know, teachers, at that point, were wondering, and, you know, I think they're, the ones that I've talked to about this coming year, are really interested in making sure that students aren't on their phones in class. You know, not so much for, like, behavioral reasons, but more just attention.
And was it just, was this experiment just at the high school, or did this happen at the middle school as well?
Yeah, this was, that was at the high school level.
Has there been any experimentation at the middle school with addressing phones?
No, I mean, typically, the students at the middle school level, we didn't have as many of them taking them out in the classroom, I would say. Most teachers were pretty strict with not allowing cellphone use in the classroom, and obviously, with the younger age student, it's a, it's a little easier to get that compliance. But we didn't have that at Robout, that was at the high school.
And so are there any teacher concerns about the kids having phones, or is this exclusively, this experiment was exclusively at the high school?
The, what Mr. Dwyer was talking to was exclusively at the high school.
But, that said, probably for the last year and a half or so, I've been hearing at my level, and I'm sure you have as well, from teachers across the board wanting some sort of, like, school-wide type thing.
Yeah. My teachers are in favor of having a system in place where the phones are stored for the period.
Do they, is there any, have you heard any feedback about whether it would be easier for them to just put it away for the whole day and then get it at the end of the day versus like the constant switching and management in class to class?
I'll go first. For the Robout teachers, they were in favor of collecting them at the start of the period and giving them back at the end of the period, knowing that that would be a responsibility on them, as opposed to having them removed for the entire day.
I agree. I mean, I think the, the practicality of implementing, like, say, the pouches, you know, like, there's, I think, some questions involved there, and I think a lot of it would still probably fall on teachers to some degree, and maybe asking teachers then to kind of be on the front lines of enforcing something that might be more difficult, get students to buy into.
I mean, there's obviously a wide range of schools implementing yonder pouches across the country. The ones closest to us, their students go through a much more involved entering school than our kids do. So they enter school through a metal detector and also have a bag search as part of their day. So the yonder pouch part of that implementation was just a part of students entering school. A school like ours, where we have, you know, between the two schools, 1,400 students entering the buildings in about 10-minute windows in each school, we most certainly would have to do, if we did a yonder thing, it would have to fall on the teachers to be the ones to, like, in, in the first period class, to, to enforce it. I don't want to, like, in this type of setting, I don't want to necessarily get into the ways around yonder, but like, they, they're very open online, kids are, and sharing, like, the ways to get around it. And so because there are ways to get around it, like, the, the, sort of the, I don't love the word, but I was going to, the word that keeps me, says like, the policing of cellphones, but I'll, I'll just maybe use, like, the monitoring of cellphones. The monitoring of cellphones in either policy would fall on everybody in the building pretty much all day. Just be, you know, something we've, we've spent quite a bit of time. We also have tried to kind of, you know, we're all sort of colleagues between districts, and so we've also tried to get kind of like the firsthand knowledge of what yonder implementation is like as well, from people sort of on the front lines of it. I'm not saying this in a sense that I'm against it, it's just the way we're set up, the implementation would involve teachers at a pretty high level. It's just, you know, would be a part of it.
And the kids, since the kids aren't taking them out of the middle school, why, why do the teachers want to do the collection themselves?
I mean, in, as years have gone on, it's gotten, you know, more difficult to monitor, where the number of students who have them now is much higher than it was. They have to redirect more students to put them away.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, they are definitely in favor of having something where they can focus on teaching during the instructional time.
So just in terms of, I'm going to talk about some next step pieces, and Brian and Corey can sort of jump in on this, but it's kind of depending on where, how the board responds to this, either tonight or at the meeting next Monday. We want to notify students and families as soon as we can about, about the new procedure and the new policy. Right at the start of the year, they both, Brian meets with students at the middle school in much smaller groups, like, it's usually by, like, about 20 kids each, and you work your way through, like, the first week and change. All the students, Corey meets with students in a little bit larger groups, but they'll go through all the rules with, with the students. In terms of the new procedure, when we have teachers back next week, on next Thursday, they'll be reviewing, that'll probably be the major conversation they'll be having with their teaching staff on that day. So we really want to just communicate, communicate, communicate. We are, you know, we are going with this, with a, kind of an all-in thing. Like, when you come into class, we're going to ask all the kids to put the phone in the designated area. We don't want to leave it, like, up to choice. Like, we feel like if we started like that, it would just kind of lose all its steam very quickly, so.
Is there a plan to say why?
What's that?
Like, when they do this? I think part of this is about digital literacy and digital citizenship. And so if this is a decision that we're making, and it's actually part of, you know, the classroom management and the approach that we're taking, like, is there going to be a script as to saying, we are asking you to put these phones away because they increase distraction, or you aren't able, like, just because I think it's an opportunity, but I don't know if that's been.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've already been talking about what our talking points will be. I think a script might be a little strong of a word, but we've certainly been talking about, like, talking points. I mean, one of the main points of the policy is that each student has a Chromebook. Like, you have an internet access device that, that if you need the internet or a computing tool for learning, you have a device that the district's given you. You do not need your cellphone for the class. We have one exception, we're not going to get into it, but, you know, the media class at the high school will be probably the one exception to this, but like, all the other classes, you have the device, we've given it to you as a district. Kids have access to it all the way, starting at the start of elementary school, and you don't, you don't need it for the classwork that you're going to be asked to do.
When a student goes into the classroom, is it going to be like, all right, go walk and put your phone into this pouch? And then the teacher's monitoring that kid to make sure they walk to put it in the pouch? Or is it when that student walks in, there's no phone in hand, say it's in their backpack or whatever? Like, how is that process going to be implemented when a student walks physically into the classroom?
I think at the, you know, the, the first couple of days, you guys may disagree with me, but I think the first couple of days, kids will be just probably coming in and sitting down, and the teacher will sort of work through, like, this is where we're putting them, you know, the, Mr. Soltis, Mr. Dwyer, I've been talking with you about this, this is how it's going to work in my class. I think after, just like any classroom procedure, after a few days, you, you kind of develop, like, this is how we do it here, and I would imagine, in most classes, so we're not wasting a lot of time, kids just, as they come in, are putting it away. Is that what your vision is with this?
Yeah, I think most teachers will have a system in place that they'll address with the students, but a lot of them will probably incorporate it right into, like, their do-now. For a lot of them, let's, you know, right on the board, it's get a pencil out, have your notebook out that we're ready to go, or your Chromebook's open to this site. So I think a lot of them will just make that part of their do-now process. But I think you'll see some variation in terms of how they choose to collect, whether it's the kid drops it off immediately as they enter, or they sit down and they get checked off as they drop them off. That's all things that will work out with the staff once they're back, and, you know, they've got to be comfortable with the system they have in place inside their classroom to collect them and to give them back at the end.
Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Corey? That kind of same for you? Okay. So just in terms of, you know, obviously, we're setting up something new that we have an expectation that everyone participates in, so there are some consequences with this for, for students who don't comply with it. So we're asking, and this will be universal, that teachers call an administrator right away, because we don't want, you know, the teacher will set up the procedure, and we kind of don't want them to have to take it further. Like, if there's an issue with compliance, the administrator will be involved. We're gearing almost all the consequences at the beginning to losing, you know, a phone privilege for the day, for, you know, five days, for 10 days, parents will be notified and brought in to that sort of process. I think we would add, after the first time, like, a lunch detention as well. I'm sharing all that because our goal is, obviously, the student goes back to class. Like, we, we don't want kids missing class because of issues with compliance around this. A student who, you know, repeatedly refuses to comply with this, we obviously, just like other things, have to be looking at, like, an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension. I will say, though, with that, if there's multiple times a student isn't complying with this, there's probably other things going on, just like everything else we do. So we obviously will look at that and, and meet with the parents and try to figure that out. We, you know, just based on the teachers who experimented with this, based on the way our teachers have spoken with us about the implementation of this, we're, we're feeling positive for the start of the year that, that students will, you know, that it actually won't be that big of a deal. I have broken the potential news at home to my seventh grader, and he questioned me a fair amount on a drive one day, but, like, we're going to have to kind of talk through a lot of kids and families through this process as well. So just in terms of, this is just kind of a beginning slide for education and outreach. We feel like just the, the larger concern with just the cellphones and the way they impact our day-to-day lives, you know, just, this is more on the anecdotal side. I've been speaking with both Brian and Corey today. You know, the overwhelming majority of issues that we deal with regarding social media, the use of a phone, happens at night or on a day off, where you guys sometimes talk to me about, like, a snow day, or a long weekend, or things like that. Like, that tends to be a lot of the bulk of when we're getting involved with social media. So we have parts of our curriculum that address it at different grades, but just in terms of a more community-wide effort, we have, we have an outside person we're bringing in. What's his name again? Richard Gary. His website is iroctwo.org, dot com, one of those two. And he does information, or he does information sessions and workshops with students and families around safe digital communication, having empathy online, safe gaming, dealing with cyber cruelty. So on those days, he's going to be doing sessions with sixth graders all the way through 10th graders. We're not ignoring upper elementary or 11th and 12th grade, but we want to see how the first round goes, and then we'll, you know, hopefully bring this person back, or we'll bring someone else back to work with those kids again, and then expand the grades. We're tentatively scheduled the family session for the night of the 23rd, that's a Monday night. So when we totally lock that down, we'll send that out to the community. We, you know, with this, this is just stating the obvious, but parents are super busy and have a lot going on and attending, like, taking time out of their day to come to an info session about, you know, difficult topics may not always be on the top of their list. One of the nice things about working with this person is he creates, like, a website for us as part of our arrangement with them. It will have his talks on the website that parents can access. We will really push that out and, and really try to sort of connect with folks if they, even if they can't come to a session.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
Because I, I thought about this when I attended the CAPE seminar. For anybody whose kids are younger, who doesn't have kids in the school, that's something where if your child is going to drive to school, right, it's required. You have to attend that, and you have to, the parent has to sign that they attended, and the child has to sign they attended. What is the logic behind that?
It's county-wide, it's implemented at every school, high school in the county. And so with the idea that, you know, they go over safe driving practices, and if we're going to allow students to drive on our campus and park at school, they should be aware of what those safe driving practices are.
And might they, like, also get into an accident off-campus?
It goes over everything.
What's that?
It goes over everything.
Right, but I'm saying that I think this is something that, I think, this is where I think the conversations with stakeholders need to occur, which is, I think that there's disagreement around, like, is the phone a communication device that you decide to give your kid, and it's your choice, and you're going to supervise it? Or is it something that is in the common and affects the community and does harms and can do harm? And so I think that, you know, the idea that people don't have to attend or are making it easy, I think might be, and I'm not saying this is how I 100% feel, but I really think it's worth talking about. Having attended that, having attended that, that session, you will never want your kid to drive. Like, you literally will just be like, you're walking, you're going to get a good pair of shoes, and that's that. But I think that it really level-sets the serious thing that you're doing by putting them behind the wheel of a car, and that they could harm others, and that, and it also puts a lot of responsibility on the parent to suddenly be like, maybe I'm going to pay for, pay for driving lessons, maybe I'm going to do these things, because you can't decide whether everybody gets a car, and you can't decide to ban cars, especially in a community where people walk, you know, we don't offer busing for all of our students. So I do think it's quite similar. It's just about whether we decide that there are real harms caused by the decision to give your kid a phone and let them bring it and carry it and be in the community, in our school community. And so I think that, and I'm not saying do this or don't do this, but I think that's a conversation that's worth having.
To make it mandatory?
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've read about a couple of districts that you've obviously seen the same things, where it's like what you're saying, to have your child be able to have a phone in school, you have to go through this educational process. That's obviously a conversation that would be down the line. What I'd love to find at the start of this is, like, someone who's really effective at doing this type of presentation.
Yeah.
So we've heard good things about Richard, but, you know, we want to experience it, we want to see him in front of our kids. If he is someone who's really effective at it, like, we'd love to bring him back, we'd love to talk with you all and others about ways to use the training more. But, yeah, I've, I've seen a couple of stories that's really compelling about sort of like that link to driving part, and like, the things we require for driving.
Well, I think also because I think we're Well, I think also because I think we're all experienced this a little bit where, I mean, I've been watching this whole thing play out for a while, like in terms of, and now there's like online discussions and you'll see somebody post like, you know, it's up to the parents and that they should figure this out. And then at the same time, you might know from a child's friend that that parent's child is one of the people who's actually spreading some things on social media. And you realize it's not, it needs to be more of a common discussion. And there needs to be some common language and area of agreement around what are the actual things that could happen? And if parents are going to be in charge of it, then they need to, and, and it's not for, it's not because they don't know or they don't wanna know or they don't care, but they might not know that kids can set up multiple accounts. So they're looking at one account, but there's a bunch of other accounts, accounts they don't know about. That there's all these different ways that kids will look to get away and around this. So they should understand that.
So, so obviously this, this page is a work in progress. We also just wanna create kind of like a talking circle type opportunities for students to talk about phones in school. Like I, I'm not gonna go to this well too often tonight, but I've found it as a parent, having conversations with, with the phone thing can be really sort of fruitful, especially if it's with an open mind and you're there to listen. And so we wanna try to create some opportunities for kids to talk about both this change that we're doing and also, you know, how, what they see as like responsible ways to use it. So we're gonna really put out information about this. I think he's actually here for three days right now or two or, okay. So he's here for the 23rd and 24th, but we'll put out a lot of information to parents. I, and like I said, we really see fourth and fifth grade is needing to be involved in this. So we're gonna bring them in the next go-around and also 11th and 12th graders. We do strongly feel 11th, 12th graders kind of have a, need a completely different type of experience. You know, they are a lot older and have a lot more experience with this. And so we wanna make sure we do that one right if, you know, if and when we do it. So then just in terms of monitoring, one of the things, and we do this with all aspects of the code of conduct, because every time there's, every time there's an issue, like a, a student referred to an administrator, there's a log entry. And so it's, it's a piece of data that we collect and, and it's part of our monitoring process. So this will be something that we review on a monthly basis in terms of how well students are complying with this. We wanna also just have groups of students that we speak with about the change. And the teacher focus groups, like we, we have very open and clear lines of communication with our teachers through a lot of different means. But I have talked with the Beacon Teachers Association just to make sure it's formal in a sense of both the high school and around that we'll have a group of teachers that will sort of formally share how they feel like, you know, the change is going. And we would share this, we would share this through updates with the board of that as we go. We really feel like that the folks on the front line, the teachers and our students will have a really good sense of how this is going and will give us a good sense if we need to make a change. And, and when I say make a change, like, you know, cause there's been different opinions shared. I wanna be clear, it could be a change at a school. It could be a different way of doing it. It could be something that's less or more restrictive. Like, I'm not charting like a specific path with this cause we wanna see how this, this initial step goes. But that would be a part of it as well. I obviously work with administrators really closely, but also meet with teacher leadership on a very regular basis. And they are very supportive of this, but they also, you know, we wanna see what their experience is a month in, a few days in even, to see how it goes. Cause it is a big change. To sort of go to the, back to the very beginning, you know, cause sometimes there's a response of why in the world weren't we doing this in the first place? I think, you know, in general, over the years, there's just been some phone creep. Like, they kind, you know, you didn't see them a lot and then it just increased and increased and increased over the last few years. And so we really feel like this is the step that we have a strong sense of consensus with staff on. We think it's something our students will buy into. And we really wanna do engagement with the larger community around phones too. And we at least have some initial steps with that.
When you do the data, can you do it also not just pulling those that got any type of discipline or got called out? But also track those that got called out maybe earlier than they get called out at all later on in semester and then the academic year, the school year? And then bring those back, bring those students back in and say, well, what happened? Was it a one-off that you got sent here? Like, I would love, cause you can manipulate data, right? So I would be curious to see for the student who got caught maybe one or two times in, in like September, right? And then maybe get them in January, February and just kind of meet up with them and say, hey, how's it going? You haven't been down here for pulling the phones. Like, how's it going? And then maybe pull kids who hasn't, who haven't got called at all to see what's their perspective. Like, it was, you know, cause like one of the research you said from talking to a Newburgh kid was like, they kind of didn't want the phone. And then when it was actually banned, they were like, oh, I don't really want it banned. And then you, then they kind of talked to them at the end of the year and it was like, it's actually helpful. So we're gonna pull data, if we can pull it at different points with different students. And then I think when we sit here again or if we have to change something, we just have a well-rounded picture
Right.
of while we're making the change and.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. Hopefully by October, we'll have student advisors to the board back on again once we've kind of recruited and established them so they can also give us feedback, especially from the high school level. Like I, I mean, I, I don't wanna start kind of going in all kinds of different directions, but like that, the, the student you're talking about, like there had happened once. You know, it's, I, I guess worries the word. Like, so a student who had an issue with it because they were really stressed out about something at home, right? And they really needed to be in touch with their parent or whatever and it caused like the non-compliance. We wanna be really, you know, we wanna respond to that. Like, we want, we definitely want the teachers to be supported and feel supported. But we also wanna take a humane approach to this. And if there's like something going on with a family, you know, like, we don't wanna just like, well, you know, the rule's the rule. Like, obviously if it's like a reoccurring thing or it's just, you know, an excuse or something, we wanna deal with that.
A sense of comfort for that student if later on you're, you follow back up with them on just how's the family?
Right.
You know, like, so, yeah.
I think what you're just talking about is like a longitudinal look at the change and then the opportunity for students to reflect on the experience. And that way they kind of have a voice in whether it was like something that they benefited from or something that they wish never happened.
Yeah.
I mean, the internal struggle that I'm having is the purpose of education is to prepare kids for post-secondary, right? Whether that be a career, college, whatever that may be. And when you go into a job, they don't say, hey, there's a cellphone ban. When you go to a college, they don't say, hey, there's a cellphone ban. So it's trying to have them learn the responsibilities of how to do it and you do that in a structured environment in school, right? So you're educating kids how to use it appropriately. But then I also feel as a parent, I have three kids, one just graduated, one's in the high school and one's going into sixth grade. I put blocks on stuff, like I block out the social media for the sixth grader all day. Like, he has only a two-hour window where he could even go on it, right? And, and then as he shows that he's able to deal with it and, and monitor it, as a parent, I'm, I'm, I'm doing that, right? I want the school to educate my kid. And if there's an issue with it where I find it, like, and I'm fine with the policy as it's written and everything. But like, the internal struggle is how are we preparing the kid for post-secondary when we are not, when we're just taking it away? You can't just take stuff away and say, okay, now you're gonna go get it.
Who's taking it away though? I don't understand.
Well, I'm saying if you go for a ban and they don't know how to, or like, they're gonna learn how to use it between classes. There's gonna be kids that are gonna be resistant and stuff. And I know when we did the code of conduct stuff years ago, what kids are gonna get in trouble, right? It was like, is, is, is the brown kid, the black kid gonna be more prone to be caught than the white kid is, right? And, and that's, that's the part where I, I'm struggling with it. Like, yeah, you know what, there are those unconscious biases that happen. And, and it may not be there, but I also feel like putting restrictions, you're not giving, like this is a structured environment where we could teach our kids. And so that's the internal struggle. I get it for the teacher part and if there was an issue in the classroom and it's a distraction, but that's where the communication needs to come from the school to the parent and the parent needs to be a parent and, and, and deal with that issue, right? And then it's just the school doing the consequence, the consequence, the consequence. And now the kid's out of, out of school and now they're not learning anything.
Anthony, I just wanna clarify, are you talking about the, the full day ban or the classroom?
I'm fine with the, the policy as, as it is and stuff. It's just an internal thing as to where does this go, right? And, and as an educator and as someone that, you know, I wanna prepare all kids for what they could possibly wanna do after school. And you always do that in a structured environment of the school, right? You wanna have them be able to deal with like, hey, I mean, there's time, my phone's been on the table. If I get a text from my wife, I'm taking a peek, making sure it's not an emergency going down, but I'm attentive, right? But I learned that process as to, hey, I'm not gonna be here on, on social media and stuff during a meeting because that's inappropriate. But like, you need to be exposed to that. And, and, and how are they gonna learn it if they're not exposed? So it's like, I, I get it, like, but it's a struggle and, and there's no answer. I'm just saying, this is what I'm struggling with, with this whole topic as to, you know, the consequence piece, mm, like there is usually an underlying issue which we need to get to that root cause and it might help identify so we could get to that root cause and maybe help that student out that we may not have helped out because they may not have lashed out at a way. But also, how are we preparing these kids when they go for a job interview and they're out of school and they weren't taught how to use it? Like, hey, you put it in your pocket, you put it in your backpack for the period. When, when it's, when it's time, you could go grab it, right? Or, hey, there is a true emergency and, and the parent, they get embarrassed, getting called out. Like, I understand both sides, it's just a struggle. I'm just, and I'm verbalizing my, my internal struggle, basically.
I mean, I noticed like, well, well, first of all, I mean, these things didn't come into our lives until we were adults. So I, I think the developmental piece is important. Like, there's lots of things we don't introduce to younger kids that we, you know, wait until they are, you know, developmentally ready to do it. I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I think the thing that's why I do think the digital literacy piece is really important, especially for younger kids and for parents to be aware is that, you know, in the adult world at my job, nobody's ever shared a nude of my colleague with me. Like, that has not happened. But that is something that happens among kids. I mean, it was in our board, on Board Magazine, like, that is something that happens around there. Like, kids do, kids can do really dumb things at a certain age and then they can't take it back. And I think that's the piece that I, I think on many levels, like, we're trying to unpack. But I, I think that that's why the digital literacy piece and having a really frank conversation around, like, what are, what are you giving to your child? Like, what are they going, like, you know, both of my kids have phones, like, full disclosure. And they didn't have social media, but they had phones. And I had a phone contract that I gave them that one of my friends who's a library media specialist gave me. And it was like, there are a lot of restrictions about it. But I know, like, it was in a drawer after a certain time. But if I went down in the middle of the night to get a glass of water, I heard that phone buzzing. And I don't, and so it was like, oh, there's still, things are happening, kids are sending each other things, things are, things are going on. So I think that it's like, I, I think we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, you know? And I think that the idea of at least starting someplace and at least having a structured way to have this conversation is important.
Well, I think that's where the state came out with the computer science and digital fluency standards that have to be implemented this September for K-12, right? And they have the, there's like seven components to it. And, you know, ethics is part of, is one of them, right? So they, they have to be embedded into our curriculum that we're doing now and it's mandated by the state that these computer science and digital fluency standards are in that. And so that has to start, like, it's mandated this September, you know? So it's like, how are we addressing that, right? And, and how are we going with that, that teaching piece and stuff?
How, how are we doing that?
Sure.
So, we do start at the elementary level with our library media specialist. That is one of the things that they do. So they do do a whole unit on digital citizenship. So they do topics such as trolling, bias, that websites that are legitimate websites, false information. And then that kind of goes on all the way to secondary level. So including our literacy curriculum does have things embedded into it. It's like Mr. White said, we have computer science standards and digital literacy standards. There are certain things that digital citizenship is embedded starting.
And is that now or has that been ongoing?
It's, it's, it's been going since last year is when the standards actually came out. The digital citizenship is something that the library media specialists have been doing for several years now. So it's actually not new. One of the things that we are doing is that we are looking at how we can make it a little bit more robust. Starting at the elementary level, considering digital citizenship does start in fourth grade. We've started it in upper to have our kids aware. You know, the issues with the cellphone, we're not seeing it as prevalent in the elementary level. As we're seeing it at the secondary level, but as we know, the easier we can get our students, the better. We're also focusing a lot on ensuring that, that social emotional learning is intact. Cause I think that's critical when we're talking about phones and how students are, because that is what we're trying to be treating one another in terms of respect. And that all starts at the elementary level as well. So when they do have those phones and they do have, I guess, this weapon, that they know how to use it in a way that's responsive. So responsible ownership is something that we start at the elementary.
So is, I'm just like, is this new or is this?
It's new that it has to be in place in September 1st. They, they give you a year, couple of years, you know, notice, hey, this is gonna be coming out and you're gonna have to be mandated for this at September 1st of 2025, but they've been out there.
Okay, and have we been doing that? And have we?
Yeah, that's what she said.
Right, but I'm saying, well, you were talking about the elementary school, but have we been doing it?
So like around about, we have the, the tech classes, like sixth grade technology will do a lot of digital citizenship. Also with the speaker that we're bringing in, part of the package is four units, all with lesson plans all around the topics that he does. So depending on how our assemblies go, we are gonna have additional materials that we can then push into our classrooms from the assemblies.
And this is something just for sixth grade or seventh and eighth grade as well?
No, it's, it's, it's for all the grades.
Okay.
I haven't looked at the units yet, but that's part of his package. For three months, we'll have access to the video presentation, other videos that he has, as well as the materials. And he also said like, if you call me in January, cause a kid enrolled in the school and you want him to see the video, I'll open it back up for you.
Well, and Mr. Flynn, we're, so for the past few years, our librarian had done like small workshops with like individual groups of students. And so we're developing a plan this summer for her to reach every student for at least a couple of days, specifically around us.
And, and since we've been doing this, have we noticed shifts? Has it been something that's been effective in talking about this?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think when you talk to the kids about digital, digital citizenship, I think they get it. Do I think sometimes kids still make poor choices?
Their kids, so it's expected, yes.
But I think for the most part, our student body is very empathetic and compassionate towards other kids. But I think from time to time, we don't always make the best choice. And part of going through school is learning. You just hope that if a choice is made that's not the best, that they learn from it and that it's not a high impact on someone else. And part of, the main point in the Mr. Gary's speech is public and permanent. And he's gonna really hit on the taking of a picture and what that can do, not only to you, but to, to a student if you're, you're taking a picture of them and it's just like, you're sending it to your group because you think it's funny. And so he's really gonna do a lot of conversation around the damage and what happens when you make that permanent footprint on the internet.
Yeah, okay, that's great.
I'm, I'm looking forward to it and I'm hoping that it goes well.
Can I ask a question about monitoring maybe before we get to the changes? I'm curious, a lot of the parents we've heard from are talking about phone use that's happening outside the classroom. So I'm curious from y'all's perspective, you walk through the cafeteria or the hallways at lunch or in between classes, like, how many students are actively on their phone?
I think that we see, you know, a lot of students on their phone like at lunch in the hallways. I would say that, you know, the majority of the issues that we see that come from phone use are, you know, outside of school. It's not so much, I'm gonna take a picture of you in school right now and that causes something. But it's, you know, I go live on Monday night and a bunch of us are talking about one student and now we all come into school on Tuesday morning. So we see students on the phone a lot. But most of the social media type issues that we deal with are things that usually come to us after having happened like the night before, over the weekend.
And in terms of the middle. And in terms of the middle school, uh, we're gonna be less on the phone usage during lunch if it's a nice day or even remotely close to nice, because the second we can go out for recess, it's a, it's a mad rush to get out to the uh playground area, the the grass area. So we try to put a lot into having activities out there for them to do from um, uh, we got a Gaga ball pit that got built, so that was like the the new attraction this year. But middle school recess is like still a really cool thing. Um, so I would say like, inside of our caf, you'll get some students that are sitting with their phone. Uh, but they have a few options. So when, once they're done eating, they're either heading out to recess. Uh, they can go to the library if they'd like to eat. And that's not just, sometimes it's to read, sometimes it's just to hang out there. There's other activities like board games, Legos that they can use in there. Uh, some kids will just sit on their Chromebooks, but they'll they'll kind of play games with each other. So you'll see like five kids all sitting at a table and they're playing an interactive game with one another at the table. But I would say, um, our lunch recess is not a a huge cellphone dominant time at the middle school level because they wanna get out and and play. Um, and they look forward to it. Like, they don't want us to close recess ever. Um, they'd go out in pouring rain, they'd go out in below freezing temperatures if we let them. They wanna go out and and hang out with their friends outside.
Yeah, I'm just curious to hear more about, because thinking about what we're trying to teach kids, I think we also need to teach kids to socialize with each other and not have their eyes down on their phones. And um, some of the advocacy we've heard is not just about kind of extreme fights or those kinds of things, but even just the anxiety that someone might be taking a picture of you. Um, and if everyone's on their phones at lunch, that sort of, that anxiety can be very present, um, even if it's not actually happening. So um, I'm also kind of o- okay with the current policy as a step. But I'm very curious by hearing more about um how kids are using phones outside of uh the classroom, because I don't think that's as much a focus of this. And as we figure out what the next step is or isn't with education or or other restrictions, um, it's not just the classroom attention, but to me, it's that anxiety that we're feeling if if everyone is just on their phones all the time um, outside of class, uh, and how are we, um, of course, we're teaching the digital citizenship, but these are addictive devices with addictive um properties that even as adults we struggle to to monitor. So is it fair to ask kids to make good choices in that in that context? So I would just love to hear more about how how the in-between class time is going with phone usage and if this assembly and the education, if we see decreases in number of kids on their phone and more kind of interacting socially in a human way. Um, because if we don't, I'd be curious what it would take to to um help kids engage with each other here in the human kind of world um, and not always have the eyes down on the phone in the in the social or in-between times too.
Just to counterpoint that, like my tenth grader, he's not a social bug, but he's social, right? He he's very quiet. He probably throughout his middle school career would go to the library and watch John Boy or some baseball statistical show. And he wants to be a sports announcer, right? So I don't want my kid to have to be forced to socialize or not to be able to go on that. When he's not using social media, he's using uh platforms to to gain knowledge about um something that he's interested in, to do it where he can't do that on his Chromebook because it may be blocked um and stuff. And I know Mr. Saltush called me up and said, Parker keeps on going to the um library, you know, by himself and and stuff. Is everything okay? I'm like, yeah, he's just, you know, that that's him. And and but he, that was his jam, what he was into, and and that's something that he educated himself on. I go to him for, hey, what's going on with the minor leagues? What's going on with this? And he's able to educate me on it. So it's like, there are some good things as to what kids use it for. And I don't wanna be like, hey, you can't do this because.
Totally. Yeah, and it sounds like there are a lot of individualized options and I would never wanna take those away. But there's also a difference between giving a kid access for an option that makes sense to them versus it just being the social default that everyone kind of like must be subjected to whether they want to or not. And that pressure and anxiety can be a lot. And if we're taking that away during class, great. And if it still exists in those other sessions, then it's good that some kids can make positive use of it. I'm sure they do. But um the overall anxiety and FOMO that that kind of creates um will still exist outside of the classroom, even if we um.
But I don't want it to punish a kid like Parker.
Totally, yeah. And and I don't think the policy we're talking about now does anything about any of that. So all of this is like in the future, you know, as we see how this.
You're asking for an observation of, can I ask? For an observation of how they're using, how they're engaging with the devices outside of class since there's a classroom ban. Is it somebody like, you know, one child going to or a few children going to the library and engaging with a deep interest that they have in getting, you know, more and more involved in that? Or is, are our kids not, you know, all sitting with their head down and they're on a device and they're asking for their Netflix pin, which was something my son did during recess last year. And I was like, why? And he just felt like he wanted to watch movies. And I said, no. But I think that that was something, when he said everyone else was doing it. So I don't, you know, like, I don't know if that was true or not. I'm not saying that it was, but that was, you know, the, so it's good to observe and just see if they're running to it and using it as a default, just paying attention.
Do you feel like you need um extra staff or additional support in like the lunchroom area? So that, because obviously there are the kids that are gonna feel really comfortable going out to play sports or do something or or naturally gravitate gravitate toward a group of students. But it is a tool for shyness, right? So is, do you do you feel like you have people to support kids who maybe need some help? You know, disconnecting from their phones and engaging in a different activity?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I'm not saying we need more help. Um, I I think we have pretty good coverage at the middle school. Um, we have a number of teachers assigned to every every lunch period, as well as uh a couple of our monitors or guards. And our guidance counselors come in and out of the cafeteria just about every day. Um, and they're checking in on kids. If we, if they see somebody sitting by themselves, checking on them. Um, I would say very few kids are sitting alone just staring. Most of them are, if they're on a device, they're kind of together on a device and they're laughing and they're showing, you know, and they're palling around. Um, and the other thing I would like to say is, I know everybody has like uh the romb out recesses like for like all the sports students, but I'll, I'm gonna tell you, like, we have a lot of kids that are not actively in any of our sports programs. And their favorite part of the day is going out to recess um and playing. And they get involved in whatever game it is that they want. Uh, for some kids, it's tag. Um, some of them are racing, some of them are just throwing a ball, some of them are now doing the Gaga ball pit. Um, volleyball has become our number one attraction outside. Um, takes a little time to set the nets up. But if you ever drive by romb out when a lunch period's going on, I think you'll get your question answered about whether or not they're all sitting on devices when you look at what a full recess looks like.
I think, um, you know, there's so many differences between middle school and high school. And then, you know, with high school, there's so many differences between ninth graders and twelfth graders. Like, our twelfth graders who are using their phones to communicate with their bosses, who might be asking them to come in early for a shift or, you know, applying for colleges, using their personal emails that aren't connected to their Chromebooks and, you know, their calendar apps and their task apps, maybe more productively than we might be seeing from like a a ninth or a tenth grader. Um, you know, I think that in our cafeteria, thinking about like what sort of age appropriate like activities and what students will want to have facilitated for them in that space. Um, I think that, you know, if you walk into our lunch period, like you'll see students eating, the students who have lunch with their friends. You know, in the middle school, to my knowledge, each grade eat together. That's not the case, obviously, in high school. So sometimes you just don't have great luck and you're not in the cafeteria with your friends. Doesn't mean that you don't have friends, but it also doesn't necessarily mean that you want to meet new people. Like, you might kind of just wanna do your own thing and be on your Chromebook, get some work done. Um, so I don't see a huge need necessarily for like staff or like activities in that space. Um, but I do see a need for talking with students about, like, for those students who might find a lot of solace in their phone and who aren't interested in expanding beyond that, like, talking with them about what support they need to kind of separate themselves from that a little bit.
Yeah, because in the social dilemma, I mean, they they kind of show how the device, you know, is designed to not allow you to engage with other people. It's like, they they show, like, a kid is not looking up and seeing somebody nearby them. They're showing somebody they might know, who might not be in front of them, engaged online. So they're more likely to stay engaged online. Like, I I think that's also at the end of the day, like, something that we're talking about trying to overcome, which is a very, very powerful product that's meant, that has employed PhDs in psychology, that is literally designed to hijack our brains and make us addicted. And that's all, like, we're trying. So it's not really like, I, you know, the idea of, I feel like in some way, I don't want this to feel like a defensive conversation because it, I mean, I'm sure you remember a time before phones were in buildings and maybe noticed the difference and maybe noticed the difference in kids' mental health or something. And I'm sure there's some, you know, there's, you've wanted to have this conversation or be part of this conversation and just like all of us, don't know exactly how to access it. So I think that's the goal of a lot of this. And I hope that we all sort of come at it with that spirit.
I really think talking with students is is really, really important. I mean, you know, there's this whole TikTok trend around like talking about your mental health now. And we see that with our students, like, they're much more uh transparent about naming things and um saying, this is how I'm feeling. Or they'll, you know, share something that, um, so I, you know, I think that kind of to Brian's point, it's, um, sometimes I see it as less of like a digital literacy issue because our students know how to use their phones better than we could teach them how to use it. And they know the harm that can come from the phones better than we can. Like, if you've had something inappropriately shared with you, you're gonna feel that much stronger than somebody who might be giving you a presentation about this hypothetical scenario where it happens. And I think it's really about the social emotional piece and the building empathy with our students where, um, you know, this impulse that I have to do something negative because I think it's funny. Um, and I have this platform that can allow me to do it really, really quickly. Like, how are we kind of getting at the root of that? And that's, you know, that's part of what we see, like maturity. I mean, we hardly ever have twelfth graders in our offices talking about something that they posted the night before about another student.
Right.
We have students, we have ninth graders in our office, you know, every other week for that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, some of that just sort of happens. I see it happening between tenth and eleventh grade, like, there's just a big shift, which is why, like, even for the assemblies, we're focusing on ninth and tenth grade. Um, but I think students have a lot to say about this. And um, I don't think that, I think the vast majority then will see like a classroom ban as something reasonable. But I think that there's an opportunity that we should take advantage of in terms of like talking with them about um just the phone in general. Because a lot of the issues that we see with phones and a lot of issues that the students are experiencing with phones, they don't happen here necessarily. Some of them do certainly, but they just have to learn how to um, how to sort of function effectively with the phone throughout their entire day and not just the seven hours that they spend here.
Oh, you mean, they don't happen here in the building?
Yeah, not all of those issues. So like, you know, the the social media stuff, I mean, a lot of it really is.
Outside, yeah.
Or online video gaming.
Right, yeah. I hope that this person also addresses platforms and, you know, like that sort of parent piece of understanding, what, who can access your kids on roadblocks or, you know, Minecraft or things like that.
I, I was uh happy that the training coming in involves uh gaming communication. You know, like I um have witnessed to that from time to time. And that can be an interesting world as well. Um, so I um, I just wanna talk about next steps uh and get maybe a little bit of board input on that. Um, I, you know, at the very beginning of my talk, I I forgot to just thank folks for coming to the meeting tonight. Um, I really appreciate your input and um.
And I I really appreciate you bringing the administrators. Thank you so much for coming and having this conversation.
Absolutely. Um, so, I'm sorry. Uh, so just in terms of next steps, um, there's a few things kind of at play. So we typically, a policy has a first read and a second read. So the personal electronic device policy is first read is tonight, second read is uh next Monday. I should s- say, just, you know, for whatever reason, we don't typically have board meetings lined up like this. Like, I had a uh, like a commitment, a family commitment earlier in August, which I sort of asked for a different board schedule. Um, so they're not normally like this. So I just wanted to say, uh, put that out there. So we have first and second read of that policy. We have to make some changes to the code of conduct um that support this. They're not major changes. Uh, essentially, um, they are just including that a student would lose their cellphone privileges as a consequence. So losing your cellphone privilege means it gets turned into an assistant principal office for the day and you get the phone back at the end of the day. Uh, that is written into the code. Um, we did add language also on using digital images or AI distorted images of either staff, faculty, staff or students. Um, so all of those changes, uh, I would, uh, in the next day or two, just put that out to the community, saying there's gonna be a public hearing, because you have to have a public hearing when you do any change to the code of conduct. That would be next Monday. Um, what we would like to do, I I'd also like to send a letter out just in general, saying we had this conversation tonight, just to outline, I kind of shared a draft with the board, like, here's an outline of what we're proposing. There's gonna be more information to come. Um, I think the principals are itching to at least start, you know, communicating this. So I, I'm wondering if it'd be okay with the board if we said, like, a proposed change is in front of, you know, is is at the board level, is this? And uh, you know, the final vote on that is next Monday, but we wanna make you aware and da, 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 da. Like, is that, uh, or the principals could wait till next week? I just know, like, because of the way the meetings were this month, it's a little funky in terms of the time. And so I don't, I just wanted to put that out to you. Well, it's not really like a vote, but I'm just sort of asking for a sense of whether there's a comfort level with that.
Do we have consensus?
Okay. So I think with the communication to um families, I think you can run it past me, but just like this is, went through the first read with the board, second read and adoption will be next Monday, but we wanna make you aware of, you know, here are the uh proposed changes. Um, okay. And so, uh, you know, this is obviously uh going to be uh something where we spend a lot of time on this year. Uh, I look forward to future board meetings to talk about all the other stuff we're focusing on this year too. Uh, but this is hugely important. I'm really excited about some of the occasion, education parts of it. Um, I've really been processing both feedback from public comment and from from you all and emails we've gotten. Um, as a parent who's in the midst of this as well, I wanna try and and we're hoping that uh this person coming helps us with that. But I wanna also just try some simple ways to help parents with this and like, either reminders or, because like, I hear you, I hear some of you talk about like contracts and I didn't do any of that stuff as a parent. So like, but I'm realizing you can go back, you can reclaim some stuff. And we wanna also like educate and empower parents, like, you, you know, you're not lost. Like, here's some little simple things you can do that may help. Here's ways to check your kid's phone, like, you know, just lots of different things. I I I feel like there's this, sitting sort of personally, you can get sort of overwhelmed with this. And we wanna try to arm parents with like, here's just some really useful stuff that you, that may help you. Um, so we're excited about that part too. So, um, okay. Any last questions? So just for the public part, the 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 policies on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so we'll be voting on this as part of the consent agenda.
At the, at the very end of the meeting. Okay.
Are there, are there any other questions? I just wanted to say that I appreciate, I did look at some other districts that um were doing either a classroom restriction or or a full day um ban. And uh, I looked at their codes of conduct to see what they're doing. And some of them were really, um, I would would have felt like a real step backwards for our district because I think we have worked so hard to eliminate, um, you know, these smaller infractions going into bigger infractions. So I appreciate the way you incorporated it into the code of conduct.
Could I just ask, if if we're voting on this tonight, then the.
The first read.
Oh, first.
It's not the final policy.
So what, so it's a final?
The second read will be next Monday.
And then we have the code of conduct public hearing and update would be next week as well.
The code of conduct only does not have two reads.
Right.
Okay.
That's just like, here are the changes, public hearing, um, that gets put in the paper, the announcement for that. And that just gets adopted that night.
So the proposed change will be in this letter that goes out by the principals, I guess? Is there any fear that um we, you know, there's an outcry from some, a group next week? we, you know, there's an outcry from some, a group next week and then we're possibly, you know, not, you know, I, I just wonder, I just worry sometimes about sending something out as a proposed change when it's not a full change. Because it's not, because when something goes out, people think that's it. But I know they're saying it's a proposed change, but I, I'm just, when, when something comes home from a school, it's usually gospel, right? Very rarely do we send something home and we're asking for, you know.
So there's.
So that's just my, that's just my, a little worrisome of that. Not that I, the earlier the better I get.
Right.
But it's, and I know the timing isn't great here, so I'm just.
Wave the first read, right? There, well, I wasn't going to say that, but that's up to the board, so there's that. Or I just send a letter, something needs to go out, I feel strongly about, cause like I don't want to.
I agree, I'm not, I'm not proposing holding, I'm just.
I can just say that there, there are parents that have reached out this week that I've said like, well, it's the first read this night and then.
Right.
And it's next week, like I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't assume that we're going to make substantive changes based on the fact that this. I think that there's also, I just want to back up one second, cause I think that there is a misconception about, I always think when things end up at the board level, something has gone off the track a little bit. And so the idea that, meaning like when parents are coming and they're like, do this, do that. I think what, what's important to understand is that we could make a very doc, like a, we could just decide to make a policy that is within our power. But it is much better if we do things from a perspective of consensus. And so, um, ideally things bubble up from, you know, sort of the, the building level to administrators, back up to, you know, assistant admins to Matt, and you might bring something to us. Um, or we hear something and we say, this is what we're hearing and you should take it back down. But then this is all informed by the people who are going to have to implement it in the building. So I don't think it would be fair, having asked to do all of this work, to suddenly make a drastic shift in what's been recommended here. I do think it is fair to have time for people to receive this information, digest it, and they could feel differently about it. I don't think I'm going to move from my mark on like, you know, I would be in favor of this policy. But I, I, I think that, I think we've set out a process, we should follow the process. And I do think the more time people have to be aware of this and prepare for it, the better.
I agree. My only thing is that the, the people that know about it now are those that are invested, right?
Yeah.
Everybody's going to know about it Wednesday or two, whenever this letter goes out. So the, the people gaining knowledge are exponentially going to increase because they're getting it from their principals.
Yes.
So that's just, you know, the people that know about it now are the people that are here informing us, which is great. Um, and the people that, you know, are checking in the Highlands Current and that type of thing. But, um, when it comes home from the principal, then it's just going to be more people. That's, that's just, I, like I said, I, I, I'm all in favor of getting something out. I just, uh, you know, I just wonder if, you know.
What did I mean?
Some people might freak out.
We have two, we have two, maybe we have two different timelines, um, that we've kind of talked about. One is, uh, what I talked about, but the other is I still send something out just because I think that's just a basic.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone needs to know, uh, that this is what we're intending. And so the change would be the principals wait till, you know, August, uh, 27th at seven in the morning. I'm just kidding about the time. And, you know, like upon approval, they send out their letter. I mean, I know people, you know, here, like open the ones from Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Saltis quicker than mine probably. But like, that's a way of kind of getting both of what you're talking about. Like I, I, you know.
I mean, I, I want to hear from the rest of the board. I, I will say, I don't think that there's much, a different policy that we could put together that we could implement by the first day of school. And I feel that it is important to implement this for the first day of school. I feel, I feel like that's what's best for students and teachers. So, um, I mean, cause because Hokel is saying she may have a policy whenever she's ready. And it would have been really considerate of her to do it by the first day of school, but I, that, you know, she's on her own schedule. So I, I feel like in that sense, I don't see myself shifting from this because I feel like it's a good, it is a good step. Um, you know, it's, I'm really happy to be seeing a consistent policy throughout the three schools and, or, you know, for each school. So in my opinion, that communication could go out, but you know, and yeah, we, people feel strongly about this one. You know, we will see, we will see people for sure. And I, you know, I quoted Kristen last night, I'll quote her again, if, if not everybody, if everyone's unhappy, we're doing our job and.
Well, we're a diverse district.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
That I think that's the biggest thing is that there's so much.
Implemented in districts that don't have the diversity that, that Beacon has.
And yeah, and I think we should be clear about that it's not just, you know, like visual diversity, like, you know, I think we are here, we're talking, you know, in terms of like, um, a range of like ethnicities and things like that. We're talking, um, economic diversity.
Family.
Uh, family diversity in terms of single parent households where they, uh, there's childcare issues. There's, um, uh, political diversity in terms of, you know, somebody's quite libertarian and somebody's, uh, you know, quite, uh, you know, focused on the commons. So like, I think that there's, these, these policies always, um, are so hard. And I think that the biggest mistake is to do nothing and to not engage with this at all.
Well, and the other, the other thing about, the reason this policy is written the way it is, is because it does give us, it, you know, the board policy is a hard or longer thing to change, but the way it's written, the implementation could change on a dime if it be. So again, I, I don't see how the policy would necessarily change. I could see, you know, we, we've talked about how implementation may change depending on the results of this, but.
What's the difference between the first read and the second read? Cause we have this first read and we're like, oh, we don't want to send a letter out.
You usually change, I, the minor experience with the reads is that like you, you can change language. You have a time to sort of think about it a little bit and you can inform something if, but, um.
Because if the first read doesn't pass, you don't go to a second read.
Right.
Start again at a first read.
But for something like this.
Yeah.
Like to what Anthony was saying, is it possible to just.
Wave the first read.
Right.
And vote on it tonight.
It, it is possible.
I just don't think that's the, the process we laid out. Like, I mean, I mean, I, look, I, it's not like I, I relish the idea of a two hour public comment where people are, you know, like all in their feelings about this, like I don't. Because I, I think that the fact is we've, we've asked administrators to weigh in. We've asked teachers to weigh in and we've, you know, the board empowers the superintendent to make decisions for the day to day of the district. We can make policy, but with his information, so.
What if it's just, uh, I send some sort of update, um, about this and they just put their stuff out quickly next week when we're done? I know, I mean, I know it's late for you guys, but you know, it's when everyone's paying attention.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, I do, I don't think we should, um, wave the first read. I think we should go through the process, but, um, yeah.
I do want to let everyone know, right, in that letter, I'll obviously change it a little bit, but, um, just like we've had this discussion, it went through the first read. Here, you know, the code of conduct changes, we'll post on the website, probably, you know, and just, like y'all are right, we, everyone comes at this a little bit differently, there's a lot of opinions, um, so I assume.
And if people want to come and make public comment, if anyone's watching, I encourage, do whatever you want. Participate as much as you want, not saying don't participate. I think that it's just that we are trying to steer a ship here and I don't think we'll be persuaded. What this is going to take is engagement over time.
I'm okay with you sending the first and then them sending it after the second read.
I agree.
Everybody good.
So I send the thing, principals send Tuesday of next week.
Yeah, at 8:00 AM.
Midnight.
I, and thank you, Corey and Ryan for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
There's a second workshop.
We're not done.
Excellent.
So excited.
I promise I'll be brief. Um, I do want to just talk about a couple of, um, things because the board is being asked to vote on the tax warrant tonight. So I just wanted to go over a couple of key things. These are just reminders that we had spoke about during the budget process. So our levy increase for the budget this year was 3.91%, um, which is at the tax cap for the 24, 25 school year. Um, just a couple of also reminders, things that impact the tax cap calculation. Um, the tax based growth factor, which we've talked about, um, in great detail during the budget process over the last few years. Um, it allowed the Beacon School District to increase their levy by 793,000. So you, we're still seeing Beacon growing, we're still seeing more properties, more houses, more businesses coming on. Um, having the, um, ability to use the tax base growth factor allows us to increase the levy, um, by an additional, um, 793,000. Um, and the other piece is the allowable growth factor, which is where the 2% tax cap comes from. In years past, it's been up to 2%. It's actually been less, but inflation is definitely, um, CPI is definitely higher than 2%. So 2% is the max. We are, um, able to allocate, um, $3 million of excess fund balance for reserves. We were lucky enough to use some of the American Rescue Act money during, um, the last school year to allocate some fun, funds into that. Um, that is finished by September 30th of this year. Um, so we were able to allocate some of our general fund expenditures into the ARP funds. And then we could generate a little more fund balance kind of to give us a cushion. So it's part of the $3 million that we're going to use. Changes in assessment values, um, so these are the percentages of what the assessments increased. So it's increasing, um, overall increases. So it's not truly a, a representation of added properties. Um, Beacon's increase is a little less than it's been. It's usually been around, um, 10% on the homestead. Um, so it's a little bit less at seven and a half. Um, but Fishkill, um, and Wappingers has kind of stayed the same from, from last year, around the same. The tax rates, homestead is for homeowners. Again, Beacon is seeing a reduction in their tax rate per thousand. Um, that's all, that's based upon, uh, the tax levy being a finite number. It's a calculation and it's being spread over more properties. So you're seeing the growth, you're seeing more properties coming onto the tax rolls. So you're, you're spreading out the same amount of money to more families and to more businesses. Therefore, you're seeing the tax rate per thousand go down. Um, same with non-homesteads, so that's the businesses, um, so that tax rate has gone down as well. I always find this to be a, a pretty interesting comparison. So I always, the, um, I always compare it because we've been seeing the tax rate go down. So our tax rate in 24, 25 is less than what it was in 2010, 2011. So there was a time when we introduced the tax cap and the tax rate per thousand was going up. And then the dynamics of Beacon changed. So you're starting to see growth, you're seeing buildings, and then you start seeing more properties come on and you're seeing the tax rate go down. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of a perspective, um, number wise and also visual wise. So again, um, where we were in 10, 11 and where we are 24, 25 and how we're, we've been going down for the last few years. Um, so this is an estimate. Um, obviously there's a lot of things involved in assessments, but, um, if your house were to stay the same, um, assessment as it was last year, um, or incrementally grew if everyone, if the assessor increased everybody a certain percentage. Average home value, um, per the tax rolls, um, for Beacon is 304,700. So technically with a regular star, you'd have a decrease in your taxes of $197. Um, in the town of Fishkill with the average price, um, with star, it would be a decrease of about 219,000, $219 for the year. Um, and town of Wappingers, um, with an average price would be a decrease of 199. Now again, um, I always get questions after the fact, you know, each individual person is different and their assessments change. Um, so it'd be a little different, um, but this just basically shows the progression of the tax rate per thousand decreasing, um, over the years. Does anybody have any questions? So it is a roll call vote, so when we get back from exact, we'll, um, ask the board to vote.
I, I have a quick question.
Yes.
So the tax based growth factor, those properties, um, are added into the, that factor when they get their certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just.
So some of them, like, you know, there's some properties that right now, if they're building, um, they're just paying for the land.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then once the, you know, once the property is substantially complete and, and they have their CO, then they actually go on the tax rolls.
So like this, this downstate, uh, situation where we might get a thousand new units there. Would those all, because of the way that property is being given to a developer, do we still benefit the same way? I mean, this is a decade away, but.
Right, so right now we get paid as state land, so the New York, New York State pays for that property. Um, I would imagine that it would be then reassessed and given to a developer and then similar. Um, and I would imagine also it would be in progression. So if they do it in phases, you know, as the phase is completed, then that phase would go on the tax rolls and then, until it's completion.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Reviewing the agenda, there are no changes. And I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the history of a particular individual and the board will return in about 20 minutes.
So will.
So will. Alina, for a second.
Sir.
Kristen, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. That's okay, thanks for your patience, uh, superintendent's report.
Just, uh, I have just a couple of, uh, quick announcements. Um, we'll send out, uh, a reminder to the community, but the IM Beacon Back to School event is on, uh, Saturday, August 24th, 12 to 3 at South Avenue Park. It's a great tradition, lots of great community organizations have, uh, information tables there. I'll be there, um, and, uh, it's just a great event. So we'll, we'll really push out, I've been seeing it all over social media, we'll put it on ours and send out an email to all our folks about it. Um, but it's a, it's a great event for everyone. And then just, uh, a quick update on the Capitol project. Uh, you know, we have complex work happening at each building and, uh, you know, everything is still on track and on time. We're going to be taking that work all the way, uh, to the very end of the summer, meaning all the way probably through Labor Day weekend. Uh, first day for students is Wed- what, Wednesday, September 4th? And so, uh, to that end, the, um, board, I want to offer tours of the buildings to the board before school opens. Um, so we want to do that right at the end as well. So I'll send out a schedule, but we're looking at Tuesday afternoon, evening for that. The schedule will be like a half an hour at each school, probably starting at 4:30 and going until 7:30. Um, you can just kind of catch up with us at any of the buildings, we'll let you in. Um, so that will be, look for that, that'll be Tuesday, September 3rd. I'll send that to the board and we will, I'll walk through with you, but also Perry and Jesse will be part of the walkthrough too. Okay, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Board comments, Camara?
Um, thanks to everybody who spoke about the phone policy. We've done a lot of work on this and I'm, I look forward to hopefully it being a smooth transition.
Kristen?
Yeah, just to echo those sentiments, um, uh, I really appreciate all the effort that's gone into moving this forward and coming up with some thoughtful ideas to, um, address some of the issues that we've been dealing with here. And, uh, I, I'm looking forward to the discussion around, um, the process for the student board members. I'd like to expand that a little bit. Um, maybe I'll just send an email around, but, um, I've been thinking about that a bit and that's something that, um, I'd like to just have, um, a little bit, it's been such a great program, just some ideas about some additions to that. And, um, again, thank you to the administrators for all the work that went into that policy. I know that there's so much else going on, um, with school starting, so much appreciated.
Thank you, Alina?
No comment.
Chris?
Um, just briefly, it was great to have the principals here. I, I got some more nuance about the cellphone things, even things like a personal email for a college application that I hadn't been thinking about before. So that was really helpful and it's also great to see, um, just parents in the community kind of talking to each other, um, and forming community around this as well. So really, um, appreciated that. As we move forward, I just would like us to be explicit in the policy and the conversation about the kind of student wellbeing and mental health aspects and not just the kind of classroom distractions. I think it's both of those things are really important to pay attention to. Um, but I'm also excited about the process and grateful for all the work that's, um, But I'm also excited about the process and grateful for all the work that's gotten us here.
Thank you. Levon?
No comment.
Eric?
No comment.
Anthony?
Nothing.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Jonathan Jacobson has agreed. I think I mentioned the last meeting, we had a meeting with him through the Dutchess County School Board Association, asked him if he would have a forum around foundation aid. And so he is hosting a forum on August 28th from 6 to 9 PM. And if any board member would like to attend, please let me know. It will be mostly for superintendents and business officials to, I don't know if testify is the right word, but just share their experiences and their thoughts around foundation aid and the impacts of changing the formula and, and the sort of looming cuts. And it's going to be in Newburgh. And.
At Orange Community College.
Orange Community College, yeah. And as you know, we had a policy committee meeting last week. And I will be connecting with other policy members to find out when is a good day in general and hopefully setting a calendar for the year. But we just, we talked about the cell phone policy and the Title IX policy that is on for a first read tonight. Excuse me. So we have two, is the district-wide emergency plan a roll call vote as well? Two roll call votes. The first, can I have a motion to approve the tax warrant for 24, 2024, 25?
So moved.
Kristin, is there a second?
Second.
Um, Alina?
I'm going to call Alina, yeah.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay, can I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Urson?
Here. Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Yes.
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 Ms. Kush?
Yes.
Mr. Shetter?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Hewer?
Yes.
And can I have a motion to approve the district-wide emergency plan for the 2024, 2025 school year?
So moved.
Levon, is there a second?
Second.
Alina, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Urson?
Yes. Yes. It's close to making a joke.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kush?
Yes.
Mr. Shetter?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So moving on to the consent agenda, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any board, member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to pull?
13.05 E1.
E1?
E1.
Any others? Okay, can I have a motion?
Sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
What does it mean to approve the first read?
It means that, that it will move to the second read. And once, if the second read gets approved, then it will become the policy. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve 12.01 through 16.02, less 13.05 E1?
So moved.
Kristin? Second. By Semra, comments or questions?
Just want to say, I'm happy to see that the minutes were advised. It was beautiful that I didn't have to pull them.
This feels.
So thank board in the district.
You did that on purpose, you were good on that one.
How many years?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Let me heal you.
This is.
Everyone is witnessing a really.
You don't even realize.
This moment will go viral on YouTube.
Put my eyes back down in my head.
As I was reviewing my, the agenda, I always take notes and stuff, like where I have questions. And I was like, Marissa's like, did you see, Jonathan, I said, I saw. I go, it didn't make my note thing, so that means I'm not pulling it, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to pull it. But I didn't pull it.
The suspense, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I actually was living on the edge here.
Now my heart rate can go down.
Just keep up the consistency of it.
Let's take the win, okay?
Do our best here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero. Can I have a motion to approve 13.05 E1?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I've seen.
I'm in favor, so it passes seven to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Alina, is there a second?
Second.
But come on, guys, on the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also in favor, passes eight to zero.